Good evening, I call to order the July 28th, 2015 meeting of the Marion County School Board. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the Marion County School Board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1, running late. Mrs. Carol Ely, District 2, will be absent. Mrs. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Anna Deweese, Director of Federal Programs and Grants, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in a pledge this evening.
Good afternoon, Board Members and Superintendent. I have with me Beth Aitken, and she is brand-new in the Early Learning Department this year. This is her first board meeting. To introduce some of our VPKers, they will provide two songs for you and also lead us all in a pledge. Beth?
Thank you, Dr. Deweese. I just wanted to share a little bit of information regarding our VPK program with you, just to give you a little bit of background and a little bit more knowledge. We have an amazing team. We have over six hundred and twenty students. That is a combination of school year and summer students. We have twenty-eight certified teachers with twenty-nine highly qualified paraprofessionals that go along in the classrooms. We have four VPK coaches that assist with the teachers in their training, and myself and our director, Dr. Deweese, from the Title I Program. And this VPK program is a wildly popular program, not only with our students, but also with our parents and with our schools themselves. We often have people asking for more and more and more of it. It's that popular. It's been over a decade that we've had our VPK programs in our schools. And we have two different programs. We have a school year program, and it's in twenty-three elementary sites. There are twenty-eight classrooms, so about five of the schools have two classrooms. And in addition to that, we also have ESE pre-K, not to be confused with VPK, but our coaches help work with curriculum with them as well. They help support that as we partner with the ESE department. We use the Elm Plus Curriculum for VPK, and it is the Early Literacy and Learning Plus Model. It's out of UNF, and we've used it for quite a few years. It deals with pre-literacy skills, math skills, social studies skills, science skills, all at pre-K level, all at the pre-K level. We do monitor our students from the beginning of the program to the end of the program. That's for the school year and also for the summer program. And I have to tell you, the scores from these children are amazing. I just want to share with you, this past school year, we had five hundred and thirty-eight students participate, and we had eighteen percent of these students come to us with meeting or exceeding expectations in the area of print knowledge, eighteen percent. When we walked out, when those students walked out at the end of the year, ninety-five percent of them had the print knowledge. That's an increase of seventy-seven percent. I can tell you the same is for our summer program, but I'll just run through these numbers rather quickly for you. For our phonological awareness for the school year program, we went from eight percent to eighty-three percent, seventy-five percent increase. In our oral language, we went from twenty-three to sixty-eight percent, forty-five percent increase. And for math, we went from four percent to seventy-one percent, which is a sixty-seven percent increase. And that's in the school year, so you can see why it's in high demand with both our schools and with our parents. We just are about to finish our summer program. It lasts for thirty-one days, and tomorrow's our final day. And so we just concluded our end-of-the-program progress monitoring, and we have an increase of fifty-four percent with our print knowledge. Phonological awareness increased thirty-three percent. Oral language and vocabulary increased thirty-one percent, and our math increased thirty-two percent. That's in thirty-one days with those babies. So I am extremely proud to introduce two of our summer VPK teachers, and I must tell you, they're all the ones that make the difference. Our teachers make all the difference for these children. And I'm very proud, like to introduce, we have Katie McGrath, and she's bringing in her students, and we also have our other VPK teacher for our Oak Crest Summer Program, and that is April Runyon. And these are their beautiful students that have been working very hard these past thirty-one days.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to repose within its stance one nation under God and the principle of liberty and justice for I love all of me even the parts that I don't see from the inside out without a doubt I love all of me I love my funny little toes and my neat little feet my legs so strong and my heart that beats I can see and my mouth that sings I can do amazing things oh I love all of me even the parts that I don't see from the inside out without a doubt I love all of me head shoulders knees toes eyes ears mouth nose I love my funny little toes and my neat little feet my legs so strong and my heart that beats I can see and my mouth that sings I can do amazing things oh I love all of me even the parts that I don't see from the inside out without a doubt I love all of me I love all of me I love all of me da 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 we learn how to share we learn how to care we ask for too dare summer VPK da 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 we learn how to share we learn how to care we ask for too dare summer VPK da 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 we learn how to share we learn how to care we ask for too dare summer VPK da 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 and now we start this song we make it into song we practice our song summer VPK da 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 King
Aren't they amazing?
That was great, that was fantastic.
Thank you so much, each of you. And I don't want to leave without giving a formal thank you to both Dr. Deweese and to our Superintendent, Mr. Tomlin, because without their support and proponent, being proponents for our VPK program, we would not have the success we have. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
And thank you for being a provider with it. It's really wonderful to see our kids, you know, at that early age, you know, really performing for us and really learning things. And your statistics, that's just awesome.
It's exciting, isn't it?
It starts in early learning, and that's the place, you know.
Yes ma'am, we believe the same, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just appreciate you bringing the data. I love to hear the growth, that's exciting, and thank you.
I've not ever seen numbers like this in any other program except for VPK, to have that across the board, that kind of growth. It is amazing.
So you guys are doing something right.
It's the hard work of the teachers, it's the hard work of the students, it's the support of the parents, it is the support from administration. It's really a great team. Thank you.
While we're waiting to clear the room, I'll just say, Miss Stacy has arrived, and so we do have four board members here. And Mrs. Ely is not here tonight, but she will be back at our next board meeting, so just wanted to give you an update. And Mr. Superintendent?
Board Members, I recommend approval of the agenda for the July 28th, 2015 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. King and seconded by Mr. James. Do we have any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for June 4th, 2015, the Administrative Briefing and Work Session, June 9th, 2015 School Board Meeting, June 18th Administrative Briefing and Work Session, June 23rd, 2015 School Board Meeting, June 25th, 2015 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, and July 9th, 2015 Emergency School Board Meeting. May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes four zero. Individuals who have completed the appropriate form prior to 5:40 PM will now have the opportunity to address the board. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Additionally, please spell your last name. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain some additional points.
Thank you. If you do plan to address the school board tonight, please be aware of the school board procedures. Copies of those procedures are available from Mr. Christian or from one of the front tables. Under the school board's procedures, audiovisual presentations are permitted if provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting to the school board's assistant. Audiovisual presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. The use of any student's name except by his or her parents or guardian, or identifying references to or identification of other students and their families is prohibited. Based on time consideration, the school board by a majority vote may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten the presentation time, move public comment time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether.
Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, the first speaker is Mary Kirkpatrick.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mary Kirkpatrick. I'm head of Francis Marion Military Academy's PTA called Friends of FMMA. I'm a parent of a student. My student is right back there. And this is Jim Rafferty, who is also a parent of a student. We're here tonight to just get a word to you that we really care about our school. We want to see our school continue to function. The kids love the school, they're doing great there. My son is thriving there, your son is doing great there. The teachers are phenomenal, we love the school. We know that it made it through a very difficult year. It was a very rocky year. We want to see it open again and continue. We have pledged our support as parents to do whatever it takes. We have members of the community behind us to do that. Lots of people are behind this effort, and we want you to know that. We know that there may be deliberations that you guys go through in deciding the future of the school, and we want you to know that you're not alone up here. You have the full support of a lot of parents. A hundred parents are right behind it. We're ready to step in and do whatever it takes. It is really important to us that this school continues. We're asking for your patience, your persistence, your will in helping us do this. So that's pretty much it. When you guys talk about this, please keep this in mind. My son is right back there. Matt, stand up. There are eighty-some other kids just like him. He was freshman Cadet of the Year last year. He has thrived at this school when no other school has done this for him. It's an amazing school, and so many stories of other kids are just like that. So please keep this in your thoughts when you're evaluating our school going forward.
Thank you, sir.
I'm on the list, too. My name is James Rafferty, R-A-F-F-E-R-T-Y, 4326 Southwest 140th Street Road. My oldest son graduated from this school three years ago. He is now a Marion County Deputy. My second son is the highest-ranking officer in the school to make captain as a sophomore. He is totally dedicated to this school along with his realm of friends. There's about eighty-five, ninety students that are dedicated to the school. Several of them showed up this past week, just in the summer, to help the school move from cubicle to cubicle, get the home, get the school cleaned up. They are truly dedicated to this school, and we want to see it survive. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Stacy.
I'd like to say something. I want to thank you as parents coming, that means a lot. I'm with you. I totally support what's good for kids. I have visited the school, and I've seen the discipline there is amazing. You see respect there that I don't see on a lot of campuses. And as a school board member and also a mom that was a very strict mom, possibly my son would have been at that school if there had been a way to get him over to Forest High School to play football, because I like the small setting, I like the way people care about one another, I like the way the kids care about one another. So if you need any support, you need a volunteer, call on me. I'm Nancy Stacy, thank you.
We will, we do need that.
When school lets out at 3:30, doesn't matter where the kids are, getting in their car, out in the parking lot, out in the field, when that flag starts coming down, all eighty-five of them are like this.
Makes me cry. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Usually it's not the kids that, when I hear, when I hear, what I was listening to is usually not the kids. Is there something going on that we need to be aware of that would make?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, and you know, I support having our children have some good education, too. And I did receive a memo today, and it raised some valid concerns, you know, that we as board members, we must address that. And so I'm gonna read something to you, and then, because I believe that we have to be as transparent, and as we are sponsors of this charter school, then we really have to let the information go out. This memo I received came from the Superintendent, and it said, "Attached, please find a memorandum from me to Penn McKee and Alice Passata. As you're aware, Ms. McKee is the primary Marion County School Board's contact for our local charter schools, and Mrs. Passata receives and reviews periodic financial reports from the charter schools that the Marion County School Board sponsors." This memorandum to me lists a number of alleged concerns, alleged concerns, regarding Francis Marion Military Academy, that's the high school, and Francis Marion Charter School, that's the middle school. Since the Marion County School Board is the sponsor and agent for these charter schools, I felt the need to share this information with you and seek your input regarding how to proceed. I'm gonna read to you some of the alleged allegations. These are some concerns. One, former senior Army instructor alleges that he has not been paid his salary in full, which the Army has reimbursed, reimbursed FMMA through its ROTC funding, which is federal funds. He states that he believes this is a fraud and a ruse of government funds. The school has been unable, this is number two, the school has been unable to obtain insurance coverage for sexual abuse, molestation, and harassment for the 2015-2016 physical year in the amount of one million dollars as was previously provided. And a retirement, a recruitment postcard was mailed from Marion Military Academy rather than the school's legal name, which is Francis Marion Military Academy. And I do have like a copy of the mailing, so that you can see that. So these are some concerns that are going on. There are also concerns that some of the board members resigned, and in their resignation, they indicated they were concerned about misappropriation of funds along with other possible improprieties. And that... And there were some other things about, you know, some of the board members getting loans to fund the school. So those are some internal concerns that we have going on. Mr. James?
I really, just the conversation made me think there was something else. I know, I don't know whether the Superintendent had a chance to, have we scheduled a time for us to really just go through this? I hope we can do it at a later date, because I think it's a little too much for us right now. But I'm glad to know there was something else other than that, because it had to be. I'm just sitting here thinking that there was something else.
Miss Stacy? Thank you, Mr. James.
And I want to comment on something. This is how misinformation happens. I happen to have a copy of the, of the school's contract regarding the sexual molestation insurance and that sort of thing. The school board wants the school to have a million dollars, and they've been overinsuring themselves for a million, and in businesses, sometimes you, you know, if your policy comes with a certain amount, you go ahead and get it, because it's kind of a package deal. Their contract doesn't say they have to have that. The middle school requires a million dollars. The high school does not. There is, it's fill in the blank, there is no amount required. They have been able to get insurance. I found out yesterday, they have been able to get insurance, and it's a one-hundred-and three-hundred thousand dollar policy, not the million-dollar policy. But their school contract that was originally written does not require a million-dollar insurance. But the middle school does. It's a completely different contract. So therefore, this is how things happen and get in the news and things, because I checked into it myself and asked that they pull the page of the contract that talks about insurance, there is no amount written in there, unlike the middle school that is. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Stacy. I would hate to bring it up, but I would say to you that in light of the fact that there is a pending sexual abuse case at FMMA, there may be some requirements for that school to carry that, in light of that. Yes, Miss Stacy?
Okay. I've also checked the state statute on that. State statute says that, that we are held harmless, the school board is held harmless. This is their own private business, and their insurance, anything that happens, sexual, you know, mis molestation, I know they had a little situation which they couldn't help. I mean, we've had it at all of our high schools, I think, every single one in the county probably at some point in time. And the state statute says that the school board is held harmless, and so therefore, if they don't carry enough insurance, the skin's off the people that are on the Board of Directors at the school, not this school board. It will not affect, a lawsuit there does not affect us in any way.
I understand that, thank you, Miss Stacy. I heard you, Mr. James, that you requested we have this at a work session. I was gonna ask the board that we would come to a consensus, maybe, that we would have just a internal audit from our team, or either we could have an independent audit to go in, just to audit, just so that when, that we are, that everything's above, that when people make allegations, and this could be out in the community, and it could be everywhere, and you don't know what the morale is, but I think as board members, we have the fiduciary duty, we are responsible, we are sponsoring this school, and we want everyone, we want everything to be above par. I think that we should probably have, probably have a lengthy discussion, but I would really would like for the board to say, yeah, let's go in and look at the record, so if we can prove it, that it's wrong, or whatever comes out, we'll know.
I do, don't they audit the school?
We have a financial audit that's not due until August the 15th, I believe, mid-August. There's a financial audit that's done each year, that's correct.
So that's coming up.
Monthly reports are also submitted to our finance office.
Who does the financial audit?
They have to secure a private firm to come in and do the audit.
Mr. James?
I support that. I just want to make sure that people understand, it's not about the kids, because that's when I was listening here, I put the kids over here, and then I, it had to be something else. So I really feel that's a good idea. If we're gonna get into it, let's go ahead and do a third job of it. So I support that idea.
Thank you, Mr. James. Do I have any other board members? Okay, great, thank you, and so the records reflect that. And Mr. Superintendent, if you could provide a team?
Some clarification up in the board, I, we can certainly do that, either an internal audit with our own financial people going in with your blessing and auditing them, or a private firm. I need some clarification on that, a little bit about the, if we did a firm, if our people did this, I would involve Christine Corrigan from our own internal audit department, and I would certainly involve Alice Passata, who's our auditor on our business side also, and possibly one of her assistants, Susan Cox, to go in. They're both very, very familiar with that data. My issue is that I want the two schools, Francis Marion Charter School and Francis Marion Military Academy, to understand that we're going in there and they... to understand that we're going in there and they would be obligated certainly to open their books to us at, at your direction. I do not know about a private firm. I do not, I have not attempted to secure any bids or anything like that. I wanted to see what your interests were tonight. I do not know who would pay for that financial audit. I'm assuming it would be, if we asked for it, it would be the burden of the school board. I'm just looking for some direction here in reference to this and to get you some valuable information that you can use to, to make a determination at some point in time in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, board. Um...
I really would like to see what you have though, you know. I think the board members should get a copy of that.
I'll make sure that you have. Each board member will get a copy of this. Uh, and we're talking about whether or not we should have our own auditor or we would hire an, an auditor, which would incur an expense for the board, so...
I don't believe that we're there yet. Um, you know, we have some people, I don't, you know, that's a knee-jerk reaction. We have a couple of individuals that have made some claims. And I don't know that we need to swarm the school because a couple of individuals have made a claim. I think that, um, possibly our people might need to look at those claims, but as far as the insurance claim, not being able to get the million dollar policy, they're not required to have it. So that's, I know that. And so, as far as it hurting the school board, if they don't have it, well, state statute says it doesn't. So that takes that, that worry off of us. Um, and, you know, but to go act like there's, um, I mean, people come in here and make accusations about things that's happening in our schools, in our high schools, and we don't run a bunch of auditors in there. I think we're overreacting a little bit.
So you think we should send our, our own little team?
Send our own little team and let's kind of look at it and it's not gonna be a swarm. It doesn't need to be a, I mean, you know, I don't believe that any other high school would like it if Nancy Stacy made some claim or some parent made some claim and the school board came swarming in on them and the administrators are like, "We haven't done anything wrong." I believe that we need to be fair on this.
Thank you, Miss Stacy. Ms. King?
Uh, I, I think it's good to investigate it and what's coming to mind, and I didn't, I wasn't aware of any of this, but I believe in Orlando, there was something pretty similar, not similar, I'm not gonna say that. But there was an incident where there was a school and all of a sudden they didn't have administration or teachers and students didn't have a place to go. So I feel for us to ignore this and not, um, investigate just a tad, you know, and figure out what's going on would be neglected on our part.
Would you like to hire an auditor or?
I'm fine with in-house.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. James?
It's important to note now, what I got from this is that you, you received a letter.
And I'll share it with you.
When I see the letter, I'm, I'm assuming that those people are, for some reason, want it, want us to get involved. Whoever, whether it's the superintendent or whatever, want us to get involved. I feel very strongly that we have an adequate staff to do that. But to, to say that somebody is alleging something, I don't want to do that until we get the information because that is not what I heard tonight. And that's what I, I didn't hear it from you, that we were alleging something. What I also heard right here is that we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing by going in there and letting people go through it. And we really don't need to bring anybody outside in there because I think our staff here would do an excellent job. And then once we do that and then we find something that, uh, we might suspect or whatever, I hate to use that because nothing's been found here, but I do know at this point, we really just need to go ahead and put our people over there. You got the information there. Let's look at what we got here.
Thank you. So we have a consensus for our only...
May I request or may I request that Chair Boynton write a letter of introduction for our internal auditors to go in? And, and I can work with you after this meeting and look for a letter that we could give to those two charter schools.
All right, so you have one. Thank you so much. Thank you, board. Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Doris McGursky. I apologize. Chris Altibello.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Superintendent. It's hard to believe we are just a few weeks away from the start of a new school year. Uh, I wanted to speak with you tonight, as I do every year around this time, bringing you some highlights of our recent National Education Association Representative Assembly. NEA's annual meeting takes place during the end of June, first of July week. And, uh, it's where various committee, committees, constituencies, caucuses, leadership groups, and delegates from state and local affiliates gather to set policy and chart the direction of NEA business. Uh, with over eight thousand participants from virtually every state representing our three million members, uh, the NEARA is billed as the world's largest democratic deliberative assembly. MEA sent five educators from Marion County to Orlando to advocate for students, teachers, support professionals, and public education. And I wanted to share just a couple of new business items that I supported and that were passed by the, um, delegates at the assembly this year. And, and three of which I think, um, are, are, it's happening here in our county. The first was new business item twenty-two, which advocates promoting a career in teaching and encouraging local school systems around the country to recruit and retain ethnic minority educators. Uh, NEA will partner with local districts, higher education institutions with strong teacher preparation programs, historically black colleges and universities, and schools with a significant proportion of ethnic minorities in their teacher preparation program. And I, and I took this out of the new business items to share with you because I know this board has, um, began discussing how do we attract and, and retain our minority educators to Marion County with such a diverse student body that we have here. Uh, the second new business item, number twenty-seven, looks to promote, uh, a model for workload standards for all special education service providers who are responsible for fulfilling the local, state, and national services mandated by an edu, uh, individual education, uh, plan. Uh, this new business item came on the floor of the assembly due to the growing nation, nationwide staffing concern shared by many of the educators at the convention. And I know that, um, historically, we've, um, struggled to find those quality special education teachers that can meet the needs of our most vulnerable students. So that is something that, um, we, we will probably be, um, bringing back to you at some point. Uh, in addition to item number twenty-seven, we also passed a new business item advocating for special education students that will serve to publicize the harmful consequences of developmentally inappropriate assessments that do not measure actual I E P goals. Um, and I'm sure you're familiar with some of the stuff that happened, um, recently in Florida where we've had special needs children taking these high stakes tests that really serve no purpose in their education and developmental, um, realm. So we were proud to support that and, and, uh, the NEA supports local I E P team-based decisions, not those mandated from, uh, from afar. Uh, and as you can imagine, ample time was spent on the effects of high-stake testing in public education. That's not new to Marion County. Um, we passed a new business item that will highlight the work of local communities around the country uh, and what they are doing to educate parents and all stakeholders of the negative effects of high stakes testing and the right to opt out their children. Florida has been a leader in this movement and it is sure to continue until our elected leaders across the nation begin to listen to parents, students, and educators. Uh, as we embark on the fifteen, sixteen school year, MEA will continue to be Marion's education advocate for students, educators, and public education. And we are planning numerous events throughout the year and we hope that you will, uh, join us in our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any comment from the board? Madam Secretary?
Jane Roach.
Jane Roach, twelve four oh one, northeast hundred thirty-ninth place, Fort McCoy, Florida. I receive, I work, I am the business agent for I U P A T. And I received a letter from transportation. I brought you all a copy of it. And I've had meetings on this letter with Lisa Kosaka and Becky Rora, who is the head of transportation. And I asked them what they were referring to in the first paragraph of that letter. They couldn't seem to tell me what it was about even. And so, I couldn't, I didn't know what they were referring to. And all I'm wanting to know is, is the other unions held to this standard that they're trying to put on me? And they want twenty-four hour notice before we can go to the compound and talk to our union members. Well, they don't give us twenty-four hour notice. Sometimes it's just two hours' notice if there's a problem that we go to immediately. So we don't have the twenty-four hours to let them know. And I worked with most of these people close to thirty years in transportation because I was a bus driver before. And, uh, we've never had this type of problem in transportation. We've had our disagreements, but I mean, not, not that I'm banned from ever coming there again. It wasn't ever that serious. And, uh, I've always tried to get some of the problems solved before they get too carried away. And so I don't know where this is coming from and I'd like to, for it to be reversed before school starts so that I can go and defend our members when needed. And I don't have this problem in any other department, other than transportation. We do, uh, food service, custodial, maintenance, and I have no problems with any of them departments of going and talking to anybody in any of the departments. So I, I don't know where this come from and I don't know why. Like I say, I've had meetings and they couldn't explain it to me. So I would like it removed if possible.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. We appreciate you bringing this concern to us tonight. I really do. I think though that I'm gonna ask our attorney board to, to look into this and...
Right.
And I think that, because, you know, we value his opinion and I would, Mr. Lake, if you could get this back to us as quick as possible. And Mr. Superintendent, do you have any recommendations?
No, no, this, first I've seen this document. I was trying to listen to Ms. Roach. I haven't even read the document.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, like I say, we've had, I've had a meeting with Lisa Kosaka and Becky. And they couldn't give me a reason for, uh, why it's taken place though. I don't know what it is.
All right, Mr. James and then Miss Stacy.
Just like Ms. Roach just said, this is the first time we've seen this.
Right.
And I really would like to know where, why and where it came from, you know? And I know we can always have attorneys look at stuff, but at least I would like to get some, I'd like to hear what's, what's happening here because...
I do not know. I honestly don't know.
I think this is just, would be fair for us to hear this. Okay, that's, that's where I am, Ms. Roach. I'd like to hear what the other side is saying as well.
Miss Stacy?
I'm just not accustomed to receiving something that isn't signed by anyone.
All I know is that the top of the letter is from Becky Rora. And when I called and I called, uh, Ms. Kosaka and we set up the meeting and we went to the meeting and she couldn't explain the part because I asked her, you know, what, what it pertained to. Because I, as far as I knew, we'd ever had any incident that would cover that. Uh, because it says I'm concerned about recent interactions between transportation management and me. I don't know what interaction she's talking about.
I'll be happy to, to look into the situation. I don't know. Mr. Lake can look from his angle. He and I are actually chatting tomorrow morning. We'll, we'll discuss how we can analyze and bring information back to the board in reference to this topic.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for bringing that to us because it's gonna be interesting to see where this all unravels to.
Madam Secretary?
Nancy Noonan.
Hi, Nancy Noonan, twelve two twenty, southeast one hundred seventy-eighth street, Summerfield, Florida. Happy to be back to see all of you board members. I've been absent a little bit, back and forth to Pennsylvania on some personal and family emergencies. Um, I didn't want to take time because I didn't find a specific slot on the board agenda formally to bring this to your attention. But I did want the board to know that prior to my appointment, uh, by this board, and I certainly appreciate it, to serve on the Independent Financial Advisory Committee, which is functioning and will meet again August twenty-sixth, I did tender my resignation as President Marion United. And I'm happy to introduce to you the new president, Helen Hamel. Will you stand, Helen? Helen is an eighth grade science teacher from Bellevue Middle School, been active as secretary to the board of Marion United, uh, very, very active in our campaign with Yes for Marion Schools with Ray Seaman and Patty Bartonet. So I know that she's going to be eager to work with the board and the superintendent and just wanted you to have an opportunity to meet her. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. I think most of us are familiar with you, Helen, so congratulations.
Before Ms. Noonan, sit down. Ms. Noonan, on behalf of all of us, I'm talking about throughout the community, we kind of want to congratulate you on what you have done for us in terms of enlightenment, in terms of education. I think at some point we have to really recognize that you have really been a beacon for our students in, in Marion County. And I know this is just one of your stops and one of the things, uh, that you do in reference to helping our community. And I just feel it's appropriate that we give her a round of applause because she is...
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
We have two additional speakers, but they've requested to be non-televized, so they'll be at the end of the meeting.
Okay, and thank you so much. Board, may I have a motion to adopt new board policy seven point two one zero, debt management? May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. King. Mr. Superintendent?
Board, this po, board policy establishes guidance for insurance and management of the district's debt.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the new, this new board policy? Seeing none, board, do we have any discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes for zero. May I have a motion to adopt the revised board policy six point nine one two, terminal pay? May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. King. Mr. Superintendent?
Board, this board policy has been revised to clarify language and update statutory authority and laws implemented.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised board policy? Seeing none? Any discussion, board?
Call the question.
Question has been called. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes for zero. May I have a motion to adopt revised board policy six point nine two, health and life insurance premiums? May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. King. Mr. Superintendent?
This board policy has been revised to clarify language and update statutory authority and laws implemented.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised board policy? Seeing none? Any discussion, board?
Call the question.
Question has been called. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes for zero. May I have a motion to adopt the updated district comprehensive guidance plan? Have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. King. Mr. Superintendent?
The district guidance comprehen, the, the district comprehensive guidance plan has been updated to include links to the district's strategic priorities and Florida's school counseling framework. Additionally, the document serves as a resource for schools and counselors as they work to improve student outcomes.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the Marion County Comprehensive Guidance Plan? Seeing none? Board, any discussion?
Call the question.
Question has been called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes for zero. And the motion passes for zero. Superintendent Tomlin would like to provide opening remarks regarding the 2015 to 2016 fiscal year tentative budget received last week and on the proposed millage rate. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mrs. Boynton. Board members, the tentative budget has not been amended since the board received it on July 23rd, 2015, last Thursday. The proposed total millage rate is greater than the rolled-back rate by 16.04 percent. The board has set work sessions to review the budget for 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, August the 6th, will cover the general fund; Thursday, August 13th, capital fund, including the five-year work plan; Thursday, August 20th, all other funds; and then, if necessary, Thursday, August the 27th. The final budget hearing is scheduled for September the 8th. And if I could, board members, I'd like to turn your attention. You have a three-ring binder on your, on your desk right now. If you would turn to tab two, I'm going to have some assistance from Mrs. Boston Ellis and Jennifer Cole from our finance department. And for the audience, the PowerPoint will be projected on the television screen and also the overhead. This is an opportunity for me to give you a brief summary of what we are doing with our budget and our recommended budget this year. Mrs. Boston Ellis will give, I'll give some general issues. Ms. Boston Ellis will come back with some specific issues. And of course, we have three and, if necessary, four work sessions to address specific questions in any direction that you might have. As you turn over, our budget documents are accessible on our website, and I've already announced the important dates of our budget work sessions, and you see those dates and times. Again, that final hearing will be on September the 8th. As a reminder, for your responsibility and the background of what goes on in creating a budget, we follow the laws of the state of Florida, that we must have a balanced budget. We have ongoing dialogue and ongoing maintenance of our budget. Teresa has a full staff of people that are continually managing our budget. We observe trends in our workplace. We align budget with our strategic plan, follow develop, developing legislation, which has been a challenge at times. We continue to have open and transparent communication among our staff and all staff members and with you, and we recognize and encourage you to remember that our budget is in constant motion. Our process and timeline here, and this is a quick review from the last six months or so, our departments have submitted budget requests focusing on trends, developments, estimates, projections, and we have created a tentative budget development where it actually begins at that time. We worked with you on a staffing plan. We submitted to you to approve that for next year. Has followed new legislation, desired programs that we had together and you had, and that reminder that 78% of our general fund budget is in personnel costs. From that information, the tentative budget is developed. We do our best to anticipate legislation, again, a challenging issue. We also attempt to anticipate projected possible revenue, which was complicated this year, as you know, by the legislature going into an extended session. And then finally, we receive and then do our best to interpret new legislation. The budget process is continuing. We receive our projected allocations from the state. Our administration applies those projected allocations to our tentative budget or the requests from our various departments. Adjustments are then made, generally speaking, to the tentative budget to reflect our projected revenue. Yes, that's cuts from our perspective. Adjustments to the staffing plan, freezing units perhaps, changes to department budgets and changes to school budgets. We receive adjustments and/or clarification from the state regarding our projected revenue. Just two weeks ago, based on our property tax, we received a bump or an adjustment of over $800,000 in addition to what we knew two days before. However, we have to remind you that this could happen in the reverse at any point in time also. We account for actual increases and decreases to the fund balance for this year, and then we prepare a tentative budget which you were seeing for presentation to you. Some specific challenges this year, and we continue to remind you of these, and you know of these. Technology is a huge issue for us. Our digital telephone communication system has been replaced this year or will be replaced. We are challenged with computer refresh. Our technology department's doing an outstanding job with that, but it is an ongoing challenge. You know, our textbooks have to be electronic in the near future. The legislature is driving us in that direction for good reason. Interactive instructional technology, the latest whiteboards, the latest interactive boards in our classrooms, and of course, we're ever mindful of safety and security issues. A huge issue, it's already been addressed tonight by Mr. Altobello, recruiting and retaining highly qualified staff. Employee compensation and benefits continues to drive our budget. Other existing legislative requirements, just this year, we have the extended learning schools. You know that. We were told we had to do this again for the five schools who did this for last year. The state did not provide any budgeting for that. And dual enrollment costs, and I've kept you apprised of those costs. In our operations department, we continue to need buses. Through your blessing, we were able to go through a lease purchase this year to secure, I think, 44 is the number of buses. We continue to need to do that. Not that many every year, but we need to replace our aging buses. Certainly, your utility costs and mine are going up. We have deferred maintenance needs. We heard from Robert Knight last week, and huge challenges there. And of course, we have emergency and maintenance repairs that need to take place. When we look at our budget at the beginning step, and we look at, we close out our budget for 1415, we notice that we have a beginning fund balance of $29.9 million. Our revenue for this year, this is for our general fund, combined the various things that we receive revenue for, is $330.1 million. This is $24 million more than last year. That $24 million comes from approximately $8.1 million from state and local FFP. That's our state funding formula. And then, of course, the one mil ad valorem referendum that our community was so gracious to support will generate approximately $15.9 million. Our budgeted expenditures for 2015-16, again, from the general fund, our total expenditures, what we want to budget, are $339 million. These additional expenditures compared to last year are approximately $20 million. Salary and benefits eats up or composes about $17 million. Our telephone communication, approximately a million. Computer refresh, .8 million. Utilities increase, and then other various projects of .7 million for a total of $20 million. This next slide kind of tells us where we are. If you'll focus on the left-hand side, our budgeted expenditures, $339 million in the bottom-left-hand corner. You heard me say we had to have a balanced budget. So if you look on the right-hand side, our budgeted revenue, that's the revenue that we are projected to receive at $330 million. So we are $9 million short, if you will. We are recommending to use $9 million of our fund balance. If you'll recall, we used $13 million of our fund balance last year for a total that 330 plus nine of our balanced budget of $339 million in our general fund. You flip over to the next page. Our recommendation is to have an ending fund balance of 2015-16 of $20.9 million. Remember, that's not all spendable dollars. Remember this, and these are my recommendation and our, and our staff's recommendation. We have non-spendable, it's not our recommendation, but a requirement of inventory at $1.9 million. My recommendation in the second bullet is that for the one mil ad valorem referendum, that we not spend every dime that we receive. We are going to put in wonderful programs and restore wonderful programs, but I'd also like to save some of that to the tune of about $1.5 million. So we restrict that and leave that in the fund balance. I've talked to you, and we talked about our health insurance that Blue Cross Blue Shield has offered to give us our pro share now and then strike a new agreement with them to the tune of $1.7 million. I am recommending that we assign that, restrict that, not to the general fund, but to save that. We know insurance costs are going to go up in the future, and as I shared with you in the recent work sessions, our projected revenue for next year is very flat. That's what all of our advisors are telling us. And then, so the final category of our unassigned, $16.2 million, is 4.9%. And I am, I'm proud to have that grow over time. Our auditors continue to recommend that we have about twice that much, but I think we're headed in the right direction. You know, on that unassigned, we are required to have by state a 3%. And you know, the state actually requires that they have a fund balance of 5%. So we're, again, headed in the right direction. And unassigned fund balance of approximately, so just over $6 million for a total of $20.9 million. That's a brief overview. I'd like for Teresa to address you now in the balance of this packet. She's going to stay down there with Jennifer. And Teresa, if you'd continue with us, please.
Good evening, board. I thought I would try to sing a song because your smiles when the young kids presented their program was really wonderful, but I don't sing. But I will share with you some information that we have accumulated concerning our 2015-16 budget this evening. We're at 30,000 feet, if you'll remember that, because we have detailed work sessions on the 6/13th and 20th and possibly the 27th, when we can go down and drill down and provide additional information to you. In the meantime, if, as you review the budget, if you have questions, feel free to call any of us. You know our numbers. We're very familiar, you know, with corresponding with you. Give us a call, come by, and we'll make sure that we answer your questions, hopefully prior to the work session, and if not, we'll do it at the next work session. But again, this is, will be at 30,000 feet, definitely a summary. So let's get started. As Mr. Tomlin mentioned, we were a little concerned around the end of April when there was not a settlement between the House and the Senate on our budgets for 1516. But a special session was called for the month of June, and by the end of June, we knew where we stood with the budget. But we kept working and we kept hope alive that they were going to do some things. Mr. Tomlin had asked me, well, what's our, what's our plan? And I said, "Our plan is to keep hoping that our Senate and House will come to a compromise," and they did. In terms of the general fund, we're really, really excited. We received an increase in funding from our state and local, and in addition to that, our community has been awesome in supporting the school system, the community, and the referendum was passed, and that's why our budget is where it is today. And, you know, we all thank the community. It's been a while. Our total tentative budget is a little over $505 million, and if you think about it, that's half a billion, and that's awesome for Marion County Public Schools. It's been a while. I asked Jennifer to go back and tell me when our budget was 505 million, and it was 2010-11. We had a budget of $545 million. So we are coming back. Our country, our state, our community is scrapping back. Property values are increasing, and that's very, very important to supporting our school system financially. So our total budget for 2015-16 is $505.1 million, and it's comprised of six different funds. We begin with the largest portion of that budget, which is in the general fund, the operating budget. Within the general fund, we have not only our operating budget, but the adult education program as well as the referendum funding. What we did do so that we can have detailed discussions and provide detailed reports to you is give each one of them a separate sub-fund. So we should be able to answer all the questions that you have regarding the budget during the work session as well as during the year in terms of what we're spending. So that is the $360 million for the general fund, and it represents about 71% of our total budget. So if you think of the general fund as covering everything else that the other funds don't cover. The special revenue food service, of course, those are federal dollars, and it's right at about 7% of our budget at $35.2 million. The special revenue federal is $37.7 million, and it represents 7.5% of our total budget. The debt service is restricted for our debt payments, and so it represents about 3.4% of our budget at 17.6. The debt, as you know, you're aware of, is associated with the money that we borrowed to build schools, to remodel schools, and we are required by law to carry that in a separate fund. The capital projects, which is restricted for maintenance, renovation, and construction, represents 9.4% of the budget at $47.4 million. And last but not least, our internal service fund, which is where we carry our insurance payments other than health insurance. So that's property casualty and those types of insurance, auto liability, those kinds of insurance. That's where we carry them because we are considered self-insured for those. So what are some of the factors that impact revenue and expenditure? And you may even ask why this is important. It's really important because when we start talking about, you know, where the money's coming from, where, what we're spending the dollars on, it's important to understand what causes increases, decreases. So again, in terms of our local revenue, there was an increase in our property values over the 1415 year to the 1516 year, again, which is an indicator of our, the economy of our community, and that was an increase of 4.57%, which equates into additional local revenue. There was an increase in the base student allocation, and as you are aware, the base student allocation is what each student in the state of Florida is allocated. So no matter if you're in Dixie County or Broward County, this is the base student allocation. And that increased from last year to this year by $122. And what that means is because it's the base student allocation, it provides more flexibility to us. It's not a categorical, and that increase can be applied to, you know, anything that we see fit in terms of academics. So as long as it's not a categorical, as it's in a base student allocation, then that allows us flexibility in how it's spent. Recalibration of student FTE. In the legislation of 2013, the legislators looked at the FTE and decided to do some tweaking of that formula. And in some instances, it can hurt us, and in some instances, it can help us. An example I like to share is if we have a student who's taking a full load, and then they're taking also a class with Florida Virtual. And you understand that students are required to take a virtual class before they graduate. So in the past, we would have received the funds associated with those six credits, and then the virtual school would get the credits that's associated with the Florida Virtual School. Well, now, what is required is that we share that FTE. So instead of getting the FTE associated with six credits, there's seven credits now divided by the same dollar amount. Also, another issue is if we have a student that is with us, and then they leave and they go to another school district. In the past, we would have received the entire allocation associated with that student. So now, they're tracking the students and dividing the FTE based on the number of classes that they took when they were here and the number of classes they're taking with another school district. So we never know what that impact is going to be and sort of an after fact adjustment. We, at the Finance Council, have asked DOE to go back and relook at that calculation, and we will continue to ask them to do that in the future because it is helping, like I said, in some instances, it helps, in some instances, it doesn't, but it makes it very difficult for us to project our revenues when we're not sure what's going to happen. And that's called recalibration. Another impact on our expenditures is dual enrollment. Again, it's something that the legislators encourage students to do, and so what is happening in the past, the college, community colleges or the colleges received their tuition for that student, and the school districts did as well. Last year was the beginning of when, I think it's two years ago, pardon me, we had to begin to pay tuition to the colleges for our students attending that as well as the books that are associated with that. So that's another cost that we did not have two years ago that we have now. We did receive some funding from the college. They would try to help offset some of those costs in the past, but based on an audit that they received, they were told that that was probably not a good idea. they received, they were told that that was probably not a good idea to do, to offset some of our costs. But we have been given instructions from the Department of Education that that is an okay thing to do, and Mr. Tomlin continually to lobby the community college here or the college here to try to get to some kind of agreement, so that we could get some portion of an administrative cost for that. But that is an additional cost to us that we don't receive any kind of reimbursement for. As Mr. Tomlin mentioned, the Extended Learning Program is continuing in the fifteen sixteen year for the same five schools. We spent about one point seven million dollars on those schools in fourteen fifteen, and we are required to spend the same dollar amount in fifteen sixteen. We realize that, we are being told that we use the reading allocation, as well as SAI money, to fund those programs, but we already have programs that are associated with the funding that we get from SAI and the reading program. So this is really an additional cost for us, same as last year, we are anticipating. We do have a proposed health insurance increase that you will be voting on in another month or two, and it's ten percent increase, and that the Board has tentatively agreed to absorb all of that cost, so that the employees are not impacted by that. But again, you will be voting on that, I think, August or September. A, a good item that happened is that the legislators allocated additional funding for the additional, for digital classrooms. Last year statewide, we received forty million dollars, and Marion County's portion of that was about five hundred thousand. This year, they increased that allocation to sixty million, and we, so we will be picking up about three hundred thousand dollars to help offset some of the digital classroom requirements. And again, we'll, you'll keep hearing us talk about it, because we're so excited, the one mil ad valorem referendum, which has provided an estimated fifteen point nine million dollars in additional revenue. So let's talk about the proposed millage levies. Again, some of these millages are required, and some of them are discretionary, and I say that, um, cheek, uh, cheek and tongue, because even though it says that they are discretionary, we pretty much have expenditures that are associated with those. So the first millage is a required local effort, and we refer to that as RLE. What the statute says is that in order for us to participate in, in getting state funding, the local community has to support financially the funding for public schools. So they give us that millage. So the millage that was required of our district is four point eight nine four mil, uh, mills, and it, it equates to seventy-seven point nine million dollars, or seventy-eight million dollars. There is also a required adjustment called prior period funding, and that was point oh three oh, and what happens is, as we go through the year, there's adjustments to our property value. So someone may go and protest their tax, their taxes, and so what we, we do is, we lose some of that revenue that's associated with that, or the value of the property when they finally get the final appraisal, it may be lower than what we have been given right now. So what happens is we lose some portion of the revenue, and what they do is allow us to make an adjustment to recoup that cost in the next year. So that's why it's called prior period adjustment, and that's a point oh three oh for Marion County. It differs for, from it every district, and that portion would be about four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So the following three millages are considered discretionary, but again, I, I don't really see them as discretionary millages. The first one is a operating millages of point seven four eight oh, and this is the same as last year, but it generates a little bit more, because our, our property taxes are a little bit, our, our property values are a little bit higher. What that says is if we levy that full millage, if we levy the point seven four eight, then the legislators will kick in something they call a discretionary compression adjustment. So by us levying that full point seven four eight and generating eleven point nine million dollars, they kick in some additional funds. For us, this year, it would be six point one million dollars. So because we are levying the eleven point nine, we'll get an additional six point one million dollars. The next is the local capital improvement. Again, that's a discretionary, and you can levy up to one point five mills. I don't know if you remember, it used to be two mills, then it went down to one point seven five, and then one point five. And basically, that, those funds are, are used for our capital, as, as well as paying for our debt. And just to put it in perspective, our debt is right about fourteen fifteen million, and, and then we have a transfer from the capital to pay for our property insurance, and then we have some small projects that are, you know, HVAC, those kinds of things that are already set up to occur in the fifteen sixteen year, as well as a transfer to help offset some of the maintenance costs. So in reality, you could lower that millage, but all that would do is probably get rid of some projects that we have. We know we need at least enough to pay for the debt, and then we, all of those projects would have to be shoved over to the general fund. But again, they call it a local capital improvement discretionary millage. The last one is the voter approved referendum, and of course, that's one mill, and it is generating fifteen point nine million dollars. So our total proposed levy that you will be voting on this evening is eight point one seven two. It's an increase of about point eight seven four mills over last year, and it will equate to a hundred and thirty point two million dollars total for all of our local property So let's look at the general fund combined, and again, that includes our operating, as well as the adult ed program, as well as the referendum. So in total, our revenues are three hundred and thirty point one million. About sixty-one percent is from state, thirty-six percent is from the local, and federal is about one percent, and transfer is about five point nine, excuse me, federal is about one percent at three point six million, and the transfer is about two percent at five point nine million. The expenditures for the general fund combined, salaries and benefits are seventy-eight percent, which equates to about two hundred and sixty-four point eight million dollars. Our purchase services, which includes contracted services for, uh, uh, different speech therapy, occupational therapy, those kinds of contracts, it includes a small dollar amount for travel, and some garbage pickup, those kinds of things are in that purchase services object. Our energy services are about three percent of our expenditures, and they're right at eleven point four million dollars. Materials and supplies are twelve point seven million dollars, four percent. Capital outlay is three percent at ten point one million dollars. And other expenses, which include substitutes, costs, stipends, and other miscellaneous expenditures, are right at two percent, six point eight million dollars. That transfer out is less than a percent, but that's basically for Camp K transfer to food service. So in the general fund, how are our operating dollars spent? Again, salaries and benefits represent about seventy-eight percent, which is two hundred and sixty-four point eight million dollars, and the other expenditures are about twenty-two percent and equate to seventy-four point two million, which is a total of three hundred and thirty-nine point one million dollars. And I'd like to point out, of that two hundred and sixty-four million point, uh, two hundred and sixty-four point eight million dollars in benefits, and salaries and benefits, two hundred and one of that is for instruction and instructional support. So those are our classroom teachers, guidance, media, curriculum type specialists, training, all of those equate to two hundred and one million of the total two hundred and sixty-four point eight million. So when we look at the general fund operating only, so this backs out adult ed and backs out the referendum. Our total revenues are three hundred and six million. Remember, our total was three hundred and thirty million. So of that, just the regular general operating is about three hundred and six million dollars, of which state is sixty-five percent, one ninety-eight point two million, local is thirty-two percent, ninety-eight point five million. Our expenditures are seventy-eight percent for salary and benefits at two hundred and forty-six point five million. Purchase services represent ten percent of that budget, thirty-one point eight million. Energy services, eleven point two. Materials and supplies, twelve point one. Capital outlay, eight point five million, and other expenses, six point one million.
Can you say capital outlay again for me?
Capital outlay is eight point six million. That's furniture fixtures, renovations, remodeling, those kinds of expenses. Furniture fixtures, computers, thank you, Jennifer. The next pie chart is general fund, and this is our adult ed program, CTAE, and fifty-one percent of, of their revenue comes from the state, four point one million dollars. The majority of that is the money they get for workforce. The rest of their funding, local, is pretty much from fees, and that's three point nine million dollars for a total of seven point nine million dollars in revenue. Expenditures, four point nine million dollars in salary and benefits. Purchase services, one point four million. Energy services, eighty thousand. Materials and supplies, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, and capital outlay, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand. Other expenses, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, for a total of eight point four million dollars. The general fund for the referendum, it's hundred percent locally funded at fifteen point nine million. Of that, ninety-three percent of it is for salary and benefits, thirteen point four million. That's the salaries for the additional art, music, media, PE, class size, reduction, instructional units, PE text, there's a vocational facilitator, there's vocational programs, there's funds in there for MTI, hub stops, for the buses, for hub stops, and again, when we go through the, uh, this calculation at the first work session, we'll provide detail for you on those. How, how many teachers, how many PERS, those kinds of things. But I want to emphasize that the majority of that, those funds are going towards salary and benefits. There are some training, as in the referendum, we said that we wanted to hire and maintain highly qualified teachers, so there's, there are some dollars in there for materials and supplies and other expenses. And capital outlay, it, that's the vocational equipment. So the revenue is fifteen point nine million, the expenses to date are fourteen point four million. Mr. Tomlin mentioned that the difference in that, we would restrict it in fund balance, so that it would carry over to the next year, to sixteen seventeen, to be used for additional programs, or supplementing the programs in the fifteen sixteen year. So the money that is not used will carry over, and it would maintain the connection to the referendum. Special revenue fund food service, federally funded, about eighty-seven percent, and that's at twenty-one point four million dollars. There's a two percent state, it's a supplement, food service supplement, that's provided by the state for breakfast and lunch. Local contributions are when people pay for their lunch, full pay, and that's about two point six million, eleven percent of the budget. So their total estimated revenue is twenty-four point four million. And the food service fund, thirty-seven percent of the, their expenditures go towards salary and benefits, ten point five million dollars. Remember, in addition to the managers and system managers and food service workers, food service is now paying for cafeteria monit, monitors, and also providing additional support in terms of maintaining the cafeteria cleanliness. The purchase service is a one point four million. Energy service is a five hundred and thirty-six thousand. Materials and supplies, which is forty-three percent of their budget, really is, for the most part, food. We are required to, to record food in, in that object, and it's about twelve point one million dollars. Capital outlay is two point four. They continue to modernize the cafeterias and, um, to maintain up to date equipment needed in cafeterias, and other expenses, and for the most part, is for substitutes in the cafeteria, one point three million. Special revenue fund federal programs, ninety-nine percent of that, the revenue at thirty-seven point six million, comes from federal, or federal through state, about less than twelve percent comes from the state. I think it's the Fidler's Grant, so total projected revenue is thirty-seven point seven million. As you know, we, we tend to budget the entitlements upfront, but we will be amending the budgets for special revenue, the grants, all during the year, as grants are approved, but for the beginning, original budget, we'll put in Title One, Title Two, IDEA Part B, LEA, the, the larger grants. Seventy percent of their expenditures are associated with salary and benefits. There's almost four million dollars in purchase services, a lot of the items that you approve on the board agenda for various licensing and, and different, um, training that, that goes on. Materials and supplies, three point two million, represents about nine percent, and then capital outlay is about four percent at one point three million, and other expenses are two point six million, for a total of thirty-seven point seven million. For the federal, um, special revenue fund federal, the revenues have to equal the expenditures, so there is no fund balance in those. Debt service fund, I mentioned that that is where we record principal and interest payments for the debts that we have for the building of schools and renovation and remodeling. Four point six one percent of that comes from state, at seven hundred and forty thousand, and then there's a small local, but the largest part of the debt service fund revenue is a transfer from the capital projects fund. So total revenue is sixteen million, and again, expenditures, seventy-four percent for principal payment of eleven point nine million, interest twenty-five percent at four million, and then a small dollar amount for dues and fees, fifteen point nine million dollars in total expenditures. Capital projects funds, our revenues, ninety-five percent comes from the local property taxes, that's that one point five mil, twenty-three point nine million dollars. The small dollar amount comes from the state, one point two million dollars. So total revenue for capital projects is twenty-five point one million dollars. The expenditures for capital projects, of course, are the debt payments we just talked about, fifteen point three million. Maintenance and renovation, thirty-eight percent is sixteen million, and Jennifer and Robert will go into more detail about what makes up this fund at our second work session. But maintenance and renovation at thirty-eight percent is sixteen point one million. New construction, three point four million. Land, it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and then other expenses at seven point three million dollars. Those other expenses include vehicles, equipment, and buses. The last fund is the internal service fund. Remember this, that we are self-insured, and because we are, the general fund funds this fund. So charges for services are about ninety-nine percent, and it's five point four million dollars, and there's a small nominal amount for investment income of about forty thousand dollars. So our total revenue for the internal service fund is five point four million dollars. The expenditures for this fund include the salary and benefits for two employees that handle all of those, um, different insurances. It's two employees, and the benefits are, salary and benefits are a hundred and twenty-five thousand. thousand. Purchased services, which includes our property insurance payments, payments for our third-party administrator and consultant. And then the other expenses, which represents about fifty-seven percent, two point eight is where we are actually paying claims. So the total expenditures is four point nine million dollars. So in summary, as we are at our thirty thousand feet level, balanced budget is required by the law. We are projecting a use of about nine million of our fund balance to balance the general operating fund. This budget is about six percent greater than the prior year, and remember, a large portion of that has to do with including the funding from referendum. Property levy is point eight seven four mils greater than the prior year. We continue to have limited financial resources in the capital fund. And I guess about five years ago, we used to get PICO new construction, and we used to get a lot more money in maintenance and renovations. For the last two years, or the last one year, we had about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help offset those costs for maintenance and renovation. We had no new money for PICO. This is an issue that impacts not just Marion County, but all districts, because now they have a lot of, a lot of school districts have buildings like ours that have over twenty-five years of life, and they're starting to have to replace HVACs, they're starting to have to replace electrical type items, and we really don't have any new funding. So, you know, as a part of your legislative platform, we ask you to keep that in mind, to request additional funding for deferred maintenance. We continue to have challenges, as Mr. Tomlin mentioned, with technology, and where we are going with technology, and how we stay up with this, you know, eight hundred or eight million dollar elephant in the room. We, again, we have aging buildings, we have vehicles that are very old. I don't know if you've noticed, there's some vehicles that are being driven around this district that are in the nineteen eighties and early nineties, but we have a great garage group of folks that keep them going as much as they can. And also, we've got to continue to maintain at least a three percent fund balance for contingencies. And that's all I have. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis, and her staff again did a fantastic job. And board, you're aware that we will discuss all these issues in as great a detail as necessary at our three, two, four work sessions that we have. At this time for the board, I recommend adoption of the tentative millages and tentative budget for the 2015-16 school year.
The question.
Fiscal year, excuse me, fiscal year.
The question occurs under superintendent's recommendation to adopt the following tentative millages. Required local effort millage at four point eight nine four mils. Required prior period funding at zero point zero three oh mils, with additional millage at one point oh mils. Discretionary millage at zero point seven four eight mils. Capital improvement millage at one point five mils, for a total of eight point one seven two mils. And to adopt a tentative budget in the amount of five hundred five million ninety-five thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. May I have a motion to adopt the tentative millages as set forth in the superintendent's recommendation? I have a motion and a second, please.
Can I have some real discussion?
Yeah. These motions on the floor, and I will.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. King. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board concerning the proposed millages or rollback rate? Do I have anyone present in the audience? Come forward, and you need to state your name.
Fill out my name and address first, or fill out the whole thing?
Just go ahead and talk.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Barbara Kays. I just wanted to say thank you for your excellent presentation, being a budget director. I know how much work goes on behind the scenes to bring this presentation to you. By my calculation, the tentative rate is eight point one seven two. You mentioned that it was an increase of point eight seven four, so the current year rate is seven point two nine eight. Is that correct, if my math is correct? And then the rollback rate is, what is the rollback rate?
Sixteen point oh four.
Sixteen point?
It's sixteen point oh four.
That's increase.
Greater.
Okay.
What, when we say rollback rate, what we're saying is, in order to get the same money we got last year.
Right.
We would have to decrease the millage by sixteen point oh four percent.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have anything against the rates. I just did want to suggest that perhaps after your detailed budget workshops, if you could probably communicate in a little bit more detail to the public that one mil ad valorem referendum funding. I know in this presentation, which, as you mentioned, is just an overview, but if you could communicate to the public as far as, in a little bit more detail, what that one mil referendum funds are being used for, what's incorporated in the fiscal year fifteen sixteen budget. I think, especially with this being the first year that you're incorporating it into your budget, that I think the residents would be interested in knowing exactly how that is going to be spent, or how it's incorporated in the budget. So that was my only suggestion.
Before you go.
Thank you.
I would like to introduce you to Ms. Nancy Newland, if you would stand, please.
I know, I've been enjoying sitting next to her.
And she is the chair of our independent review committee. That committee is tasked with reviewing and what we do with that one mil. The entire four years, we will have an independent committee looking at how we spend that money, and they will give us reports as well. So rest assured.
And I understand how that works. I'm well aware, and I appreciate that, with having the community representation. But just to be able to provide to those beyond, those who attend the meeting, that attend the workshops, which I'm sure you don't have a big crowd at your workshops, but just to make sure the general public gets the message of, especially with it being the first year, that it needs to be communicated back to them, so.
Thank you, we appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
I'd just need to say that we're obligated by the language in the referendum to give the. We are obligated by the language in the referendum to present a detailed analysis of the manner in which the school board has insured the funding for the various categories of the referendum, and that is to be done on an annual basis and examined for public review.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Board, any comment?
Thank you.
Any more public discussion? Come forward, sir.
Good evening. Ed Wilson, sixty-nine sixty, Southwest one hundred and fifty-fifth Street, Dunellen. And I have to tell you, as a taxpayer, I'm really appalled that after getting a one mil tax increase voted by the citizens of this county, and a huge increase in revenue last year, and another six million dollar increase in revenue this year, that you would be presenting a tentative budget asking for another almost point nine percent, or point nine mil increase. I think that's a slap in the face to the taxpayers after they just voted for one mil increase, and you come right back trying to take another eight point seven four mil increase? I'm appalled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms., would you address that for us, please, now?
The increase of point eight seven two includes the one mil. If that makes sense to you.
That was my question.
Yes, it includes the one mil. So there are reductions in the required local effort. The discretionary millage stayed the same as last year, the capital projects stayed the same as last year. The only difference is our property values went up, and a lot of times, what they do is, if the property values go up, they'll reduce the millage. So that point eight seven two includes the one mil.
Thank you, I apologize.
And I'll make sure that we clarify that at the first session as well.
That needs to be made very clear to the public.
Right. I have a schedule of that. I just, I mean, we could keep you here till midnight, but I thought we would save the detail for the work sessions.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Stacey.
Mr. Wilson, it's interesting that you felt that way, because that was what was blowing the top off of my head when I was telling Mrs. Boynton I needed to talk.
I wasn't the only one confused.
You weren't the only one, because then I sat here and I went, wait a minute, that one mil was included, and I started looking, so we actually went down. But that was exactly when I said, can I ask a question? Because for a moment, with all the numbers we were given, and things on different pages, I truly, that was my question, was why are we going up? But I had already figured it out before you got up there, so you were busy making your little presentation, while I was, I had time to think. So I had a little, I had a little leeway on you.
I was a little reluctant to come out here without having done all my homework, but I felt I had to, and so thank you for that explanation.
And I appreciate that.
And again, I apologize.
But I appreciate, but that was my question that I had also, too, Ed.
That's fine.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr.
We'll make sure we include that as a part of the work session as well, because I have it here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and thank you, Ms. Ellis. Is there any more discussion from the audience? Board, any discussion? I call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes four zero. Board, may I have a motion to adopt a tentative budget in the amount of five hundred five million ninety-five thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars? May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. King. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the board concerning the tentative budget? Board, do you have any discussion? Call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes four zero. Before we move into our consent agenda, I realize that the boy scout has left. I thought we would probably have a little break by having him come and stand up, but I want to mention, we did have a boy scout come to our meeting again, which is such an honor for us to have them come. So, but if you're out there, please make sure you give us your name and when you come in and your troop, so we can recognize you. Thank you. Board, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted? I have a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded by Mr., moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. King. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the following donations. One thousand dollars to Bellevue High School from David Marley Noe. One thousand dollars to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from Rishi Shakri, grade four, a student. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Dunellen High School from their business partner, Collier Jernigan and Gordette P.A., via the Public Education Foundation. Four thousand three hundred dollars to Hammett L. Bowen Jr. Elementary School from Hammett Bowen P.T.O. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Liberty Middle School from their business partner, ACA Construction Group LLC, via the Public Education Foundation. Eleven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars to Marion Technical Institutes from CMGRP Inc., via the Public Education Foundation. Five thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars to Shady Hill Elementary School from Shady Hill Elementary PTA. One thousand dollars from, to R.L. Ward Highlands Elementary School from Target. One thousand three hundred and ninety dollars to Westport High School from Westport High FFA alumni. One thousand dollars to Westport High from ICF International. We have a correction from the last board meeting. It was twenty-five hundred dollars to Eighth Street Elementary School from their business partner, Saint Leo University, via the Public Education Foundation. We originally approved that it was going to South O'Callaghan area. So may I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. King. Is there any discussion? Call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes four zero. And Mrs. King, would you do us the honor of thanking our donor students?
I sure will. On behalf of the school board, I would like to say how grateful that we are for our community members and our businesses, and including our students. It was recognized that the schools have received, specifically, Dr. N.H. Jones had received a thousand dollars from a student, and he wrote a nice little letter, so I thought we would read it. And it says, Dear Mrs. Laffey, today I received one thousand dollars from my grandparents. I am very lucky to have this gift for my ninth birthday. I would like to donate this gift to my school, Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School. This school means a lot to me, and I want to see this school be the best school in the country. He didn't even say county, he said country. This will be an amazing thing to see that money go to use at our school. I am very appreciative for the amazing teachers at Dr. N.H. Jones. I am so blessed to have a great principal like you. I thank Dr. N.H. Jones from the bottom of my heart, and once and for all, thank you. Sincerely, Rishi Shakri. And what a gift. Could you imagine being nine years old and going to give your school a thousand dollars? That's impressive. And so we thank him, and we, again, we thank all our donations. Our county gives an abundance to our schools, and again, we're very gracious and thankful.
Thank you so much for thanking for us tonight. Moving along, as previously mentioned, the next administrative briefing and work session will begin review of the proposed budget for the fiscal year fifteen sixteen, and is scheduled for Thursday, August sixth, two thousand fifteen, at nine a.m. So make sure you adjust your calendars and to reflect that. At this time, do you have any community reports, concerns, or comments, board members? I'll start with you, Mr. James.
Just a reminder that our school will be working with our back-to-school backpack. I know that we worked really hard down at Rising Academy down there to get the kids involved and get the schools involved in that. If you, if you would like to continue to contribute to that, let's do so. But I know that we're getting ready to start school, and just get out there and support the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. King.
I'm going to piggyback off Mr. James, stuff the bus. This past Saturday, I was at Zumba, and I'll tell you what, it was packed full of mostly women, I think there was one gentleman in there, and it was for stuff the bus, and also, they... And also, they go to a different Walmart every week for the next, I think they have three more weeks left, and this following week, they'll be at the Walmart on, on top of the world, and any donations, whether it be paper, pencils, glue, anything creative, sometimes we take these things for granted, but our students, they sure use them. And that's what I have to share today.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy.
You know, I really don't think I have anything to share tonight. I'm still absorbing all we receive from our business director over there, and it's ch- my head.
Well, that's, that's new for us, so thank you, though.
Yeah, she, I think she overwhelmed, she finally overwhelmed me.
All right. Mr. Lake, do you have anything you want to say?
No, thanks.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you very much. A few things, Board, for, for your attention. If you had heard about an alligator loose on the Fort McCoy School campus, your information was accurate. Yesterday, we had about a seven-foot alligator wandered onto the campus. Fortunately, no, no students were there. A trapper was called, and we disposed of the alligator, put the alligator back in his comfort of his swamp in about an hour or so. So it is a true rumor, if you happen to hear that one. I've just finished a great two-day conference with our assistant principals and principals, about a hundred and forty participants there. We had many different sponsors from our community who, who helped us put on that issue. We had a special address from Commissioner Pam Stewart, who came and talked to us on, on Monday. Fantastic event, as our principals and assistant principals get ready for school. Today, we also received, or my office received, a survey from the Florida Association of District School Superintendents, asking us, Marion County, about our challenges with hiring appropriate instructional personnel. It appears that this is a challenge all across the state, and possibly all across the nation, to secure good, qualified instructors, and we're busy working on that. As a matter of fact, our own Employment Services Division Department has actually gone to a different venue for attempting to secure people who might be interested in a private advertising group. We're advertising availability here in Marion County, so that the word is, yes, we are hiring in Marion County, and we need to spread that. We just wrapped up a great summer school program. You had a wonderful example of our VPK tonight. We also had STEM Con in our elementary schools, about six hundred and fifty students participating in that. Third-grade reading camp, over five hundred children participating there. Driver education, two graduating classes, so watch out there, we have new drivers on the highway. We have hundreds of middle school units that were received by our middle school students, which enable them to be promoted to the next grade, and hundreds of high school credits that were awarded to students that they earn this, this year, that of course go to high school graduation, and again, which our graduation rate continues to increase. Finally, we are just about finished moving portables around the campus with our one mil referendum. We continue to go there, and are addressing class size. We've had to move a number of portables to some of our facilities. We moved just over twenty portables. We have two more to go, according to Mr. Gregory, so we'll be all set for the first day of school. We'll be ready to up and running with all those portables. Our maintenance department's done a fantastic job, often working on the weekends to make sure those portables are ready to go for our classrooms. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. Madam Secretary, you have anything? Thank you. Well, Board, you saw me shuffling my papers, so I did bring you all something, just to kind of go over. I've been meeting with our Board Attorney almost weekly, but not off, not, you know, not every week. And there are some things that I, I, as I looked at our policies, I thought, well, maybe if we had a different policy, or maybe if we had a policy, there would be some, some guidance on how we, as a Board, can do things. I want us to be an effective, strong Board, and policies kind of guide you along the way. So I pulled some information from Orange County's website. I did look at other counties, but when I looked at Orange County's website, it was more thorough and, and more giving a, a guidance on how a Board should be, how the Board Chair should be, what are my responsibilities, how, how do I go about doing them? And then the legal department, we have a fantastic legal department that's doing a lot, and we didn't have, we don't have a policy that's guiding them. So, I, I put together a packet. Take one. And this goes to you. And I've already given one to, to, to. And if the first one says Legal Department Board two point four one oh, this is a new policy, just want you to go and look at it, put some ideas together. This is just a draft for you to look, this is what it should look like, should there be anything additional to it? We should look at doing that. And I would hope you all would support me on that. The, the second one was the responsibilities and authority of the, of the Board. And that's a thicker package. On top, you will see our policy, and then you turn one page, and you see Orange County's policy. It's nine pages long, but it's more direct, and it gives you some really strong guidance. Everything may not apply to us, but I'm sure if we look at it and come together and have a workshop, and pull this information, and say, what applies to us? Can we use it? Yes. Will it help us? Yes. Will we be stronger? I'm sure. Will we know our role? Yes. You know? So if you could look at this, this one, too, and I really need your support, that we could come up with a, a Board policy that gives us the guidance for our county. All right? And then the third one is the super, is dealing with the superintendent relations. How are we going to relate with the superintendent? How he's relating with us? What's our role to the superintendent? And I think that needs to be more defined. We all know he hires, he fires. But we need it in a policy set up for, for this Board, or any Board coming behind us, because we never know what, what would happen in an election, that they can see, this is what our role is. These are, these are boundaries that we cross or we don't cross. So if you can look at this policy from Orange County, and we can tweak it the same as all the others, if you would, I would need your blessing and supportingness. I would also ask that we would have a workshop on this, so that we can discuss it more thoroughly. Okay? Ms. Flocketer, Board, can you, would you, would you consider it? Okay. And if we could set up a workshop, Ms. Flocketer, and get back with us on it? Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Was this Orange County's also on superintendent?
Uh-huh, this is Orange County's.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I looked at St. Lucie's, West Palm Beach. I, I looked everywhere, you know, but those were like, they stood out because they were more defining, more, more information. And I really liked that. As I looked at their website, they even had a, a section for the legal department, and there was so much up under it that gave guidance, that I think that it, it lessened the questions from them, because they were really thorough. And maybe one day, we can look at getting our legal department a web, webpage, you know? So that's something I would like for you all to think about also. Thank you. All right, Board, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that Board members have received an alternative placement list for students through July ninth, two thousand fifteen. In addition to the early requests, are there any parents in the audience who are wishing, who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Since there are no parents, at this point, we're going to have to adjourn the meeting.
We need to go ahead and do the expulsions and then the parents, because expulsions need to be televised.
Thirty-three. You got on here forty-seven. You have forty-seven on my page.
No, that's if there was parents.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD fifteen dash sixty-three with educational services through the first semester of two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year? May I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. King, seconded by Mr. James. Any discussion? Call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes four, zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsions of students JD fifteen dash one-one-seven E, JD fifteen dash one-one-eight, JD fifteen dash one-one-nine, JD fifteen dash one-two-zero, JD fifteen dash one-two-one, JD fifteen dash one-two-two, and JD fifteen dash one-two-three E with educational services through the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year? May I have a motion and a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Mrs. King, seconded by Mr. James. Is any discussion? Call a question, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes four, zero. This concludes the televised portion of the meeting to accommodate a request by an individual to not be televised when addressing the Board. Mrs. Karen Santiago, I will be calling a brief recess to clear the room prior to the further discussion, student?
We need to just now go off the air and have them talk.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
We're, we're off the air.
We're off the air?
Now we can go ahead and, and ask this.